will be called to order, and as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And we're honored today to have Chaplain Lorenzo Hatch here to lead us in vote.
Please bow your heads with me. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for all your blessings, especially for the blessing of freedom. Lord, we ask that you bless this council with wisdom to discern your will and the courage to do it. May they always be guided by the light of your Holy Spirit. Protect our brave men and women who serve our community as firefighters and police officers. And Lord, we lift up in a special way all those who were impacted by the recent hurricane. May all those who who lost lives, who lost property, may see you in those who respond to them and assist them. And may all we do bless your holy name, and I ask this in all things through your son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Honor of Texas. This is mine. Pledge of allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have two proclamations today, and the first one is going to be Habitat for Humanity. I'm sure there are people in the audience with Habitat for Humanity, so if you would please come forward. On Monday, October the 3rd, 2022, Habitat for Humanity of San Angelo joined with partners around the world in raising awareness, educating, and mobilizing individuals and communities to take action on the current global housing crisis. Habitat for Humanity of San Angelo joins our partners to rededicate ourselves to recognizing the basic right of everyone to adequate shelter. A decent place to live can remove barriers to opportunity, health, and success for going families now and for generations to come. Habitat for Humanity began in 1976 as a grassroots effort on a community farm in southern Georgia. The Christian Housing Organization has since become a leading global nonprofit, working in more than 1,300 communities throughout the U.S. and in more than 70 countries. Families and individuals in need of a hand up partner with Habitat for Humanity to build or improve a place they can call home. Habitat homeowners help build their home alongside volunteers and pay an affordable mortgage. Everyone can help families achieve the strength, stability, and self-reliance they need to build better lives for themselves. Locally, Habitat for Humanity of San Angelo, Galilee Community Development Corporation, and the City of San Angelo stand together to help ensure we all provide affordable housing throughout our community. Through shelter, we empower. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Monday, October the 3rd, 2022, as World Habitat Day 2022 and Affordable Housing Day, and ask everyone to join together as a global network in communicating the message that every one of us deserves the opportunity for a better future.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter and city councilman. I appreciate this very much. Keeping affordable housing is top of mind, especially for Bob Solis and Stephanie Hamby at Galilee. We we live and breathe this. It's important to remember the people who are working poor, and that's who we serve. We serve people who who can afford to purchase homes that we build, but they couldn't afford a traditional loan. So that's important. San Angelo Habitat has built 75 homes since we started in 1970, actually, in 1996 here in San Angelo. We are carrying 32 mortgages right now. All of the others have already paid off their homes. What a beautiful thing that is. We are starting a new home in about two weeks for a family that has, she is a single mom with five children. We're so excited about this, and I know that Stephanie builds a lot more houses than I do, and Bob lives, eats, and breathes affordable housing every day. So I just want to thank you all again. Thank you and the city council for thinking of us and this proclamation. We really appreciate it.
Do we have individuals here for Red Ribbon Week? Come on. Lot of individuals. This is great. Substance use disorder is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and are a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers: accidents, homicides, and suicides. It is imperative that visible unified preventative education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. It is the goal of Red Ribbon Week and ADAC to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. The Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. The Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council for the Concho Valley and Concho Valley Cares has many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week campaign and is asking the residents of San Angelo to observe Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through the 31st of 2022. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 23 through 31, 2022, as Red Ribbon Week, and call upon all residents, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and colleges in the City of San Angelo to support and increase awareness and prevention efforts in our community.
Hello. Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Gunter and city council members for your support. My name is Jennifer Flores, and I am the Community Coalition Partnerships Director at the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council for the Concho Valley. Red Ribbon Week is celebrated October 23rd through 31st in the Concho Valley, and it's the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention awareness program. Our prevention team acknowledges and celebrates this week each year with the Concho Valley by traveling to schools, agencies, and more to educate on the history and the importance of Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week started after the death of DEA Agent, Special Agent Enrique Camarena in 1985, and his community began wearing red ribbons to show their opposition to drugs. And so today, we honor Enrique Camarena's legacy by celebrating Red Ribbon Week and pledging to live drug-free and honoring the sacrifice he made, but also all that have lost their lives in the fight against drugs. I encourage you to help us raise awareness of living a drug-free life by taking the opportunity to talk to your kids about alcohol and other drugs. Thank you.
She said it all.
She did.
She covered it all.
We will now open, have public comment, so issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. I'd like to start by just making a small statement concerning the events that happened early Sunday morning. Sunday, October 2nd, a Marine's life was taken here in San Angelo. My deepest condolences go out to the family and friends of the Marine, as well as everyone at Goodfellow Air Force Base. This is still an ongoing investigation. Any future updates will come from the San Angelo Police Department. I'd like to thank S.A.P.D. for their quick response that led to the apprehension of the suspect. Goodfellow is a huge part of this community. We will continue to have strong support for our military community in San Angelo, and I know that everyone here in the audience today will continue to offer prayers for the families and for all those people who serve at Goodfellow Air Force Base. We want to make sure that they believe they can leave the base and have a safe environment to go out and enjoy our community in. So thank you and help us ensure that that happens. Are there any other individuals in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? If so, please come forward, state your name and your SMD area. Thank you.
I'm Andrea C. Flain. I reside in District 1 at 5014 Westway Drive, San Angelo. Mayor and city council members, I am here again before you to ask you to put Kimberly, Henry, and I as an agenda item on the next city council meeting. We would like to present a proposal to you that addresses accessibility issues in San Angelo. We both love San Angelo. Kim has a business here, belongs to the Chamber, and is active in many organizations, and is also a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the Chamber. I work in San Angelo, live here, and volunteer at many nonprofits in town. Currently, I'm the president of the San Angelo Association of Nonprofits, and I serve on a few boards. I too am a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the Chamber. We, along with many others, have vested interest in this city. We love this city. When I see issues or opportunities, I don't complain, but I point out solutions to the problems. We are not wanting to complain. We want to help San Angelo be a great city where people, all people, will feel welcome, live here, have fun here, and yes, spend money here. We personally have a unique perspective regarding our city and accessibility, and that's why we want to help. We have prepared an informative and dynamic proposal. Please put us on the agenda for the October 18th council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer public comment at this point? Seeing none, we will move on into our consent agenda.
May I?
Yes.
May I ask that these ladies be put on our next agenda, please? I believe that it's National Disability Employment Awareness Month, is it not? And so that seems appropriate, October.
I think the question is, we can put it on the agenda, but what is it we want to accomplish with it on the agenda?
I think we want to enable these two ladies to give their presentation in support of raising awareness for
Just so we know what to prepare the agenda for.
Accessibility in San Angelo.
Okay.
Have it on her.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Karen. We are now in the consent agenda, and I will start with Larry. Is there any item you'd like pulled?
No, ma'am.
Karen.
No, ma'am.
Lucy.
No, ma'am.
I'm going to pull C and D. Harry.
No, ma'am.
Tom.
No, ma'am.
Tommy.
No, ma'am.
All right. We will start with item C, consider awarding FD-02-22 to Credit Systems.
Could we take a vote on the consent agenda with the exception of C and D?
Yeah, you can. We can. Would I, I would offer someone an opportunity to
Move.
And a second, then, any public comment on approving consent agenda with the exception of C and D? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, we will move into consider awarding FD-02-22 to Credit Systems International Incorporated for collection purposes in the amount of 22% of the collection balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, you are on.
Good morning. Patrick Brody, Fire Chief.
Chief, Patrick Brody.
So about July, we requested proposals for a third-party collection agency to collect on our bad debt for our EMS billing. We received five respondents. We formed a committee of three personnel that independently scored each respondent, and we had certain criteria in your background that we were specifically looking at for these respondents. They were all scored, and Credit Systems Company Incorporated came out number, correction, Credit Systems International Incorporated was number one on the list. And they brought a couple of things to the table that I was specifically looking for: interoperability with our, some of our current systems, such as our payment receiving method of Central Square, and then also interoperability with our current billing company for a seamless transition for bad debt to be sent to them and immediately collected on.
Bad debt, how long, I mean, if you go back, where does that bad debt start, and what are we looking at in terms of total dollars?
Okay. So our current billing company, they only do billing. So they're going to grab any of that low-hanging fruit that is from insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, and then any private pays. And they will actively collect on that bill for up to about 120 days. After 120 days, pretty much, there's nothing else for them to bill, so then it needs to go to a collection agency to grab that. Now, we have, we have some debt, of course, every month adds to that 120-day limit, but we have all the way back since the inception of when we went with Emergicon, our billing company, that I intend to send every bit of that bad debt to them. The longer a debt is out there, the less likely it is to collect. So anything over like 365 days, the percentage goes to like 1% or 2% collection. Anything from 120 to about 180 days, you get about a 10% collection. It's real hard to forecast until the company comes in and runs a diagnostic, if you will, of our demographic and can properly assess what that is going to look like for San Angelo. Now, I did my own forecast. Traditionally, with medical billing, it's about 4% collection rate. Sounds a little depressing, but 4% of something is better than nothing, in my opinion.
That's 4% of the collection, the outstanding bills, not 4% of total.
Correct, yes, ma'am. And kind of forecasting, and I hate to throw a number out there because frankly, I could be wrong, we're looking at potential increase in revenue anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000 per year. So it'll be a significant impact to our budget.
So have we had a collection agency before, or is this the first time we're using a collection agency?
First time we're actually using a specific collection agency for EMS billing. Our previous billing company did their own in-house billing. When we moved to Emergicon, they no longer provided a, they specialized in billing, not in collection. So at that time, we started investigating and moving forward for a collection agency.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Chief Brody?
To put this into a perspective everybody can understand, what's the dollar amount that we're owed?
Well, there's a couple of different. Currently, we have about 1.6 million in bad debt that is this year's bad debt. Of course, we have some from
Just the year of 2022.
Yes, ma'am. Just 2022's bad debt. Now, as far as what we bill out every year and what we collect, so we bill out close to 12 million, and we receive just under 4 million a year. Yes. Now, some of that is indigent care and uncompensated care that, you know, that we've received back at the end of the year. A lot of that indigent, indigent, indigent care does not get collected on because we receive that uncompensated care money, and it cannot be collected on. So the remaining that is not indigent care goes to a collection agency.
Pretty outstanding number.
It's, well, if you look industry-wide, healthcare-wide, it runs about average with healthcare collections.
So we're industry standard.
Yes, ma'am.
Still an amazing number. Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. And this collection agency will retain 22% of anything that you
Yes, ma'am. Only of what they collect. So whenever, they only bill us for what is collected, they take their slice of the pie off before it comes to us.
Any other questions for Patrick, Chief Brody? Okay, so with that, let's, do I have a motion to approve item C? Lucy made the motion. May I have a second? Second by Tommy. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving item C, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will move to item D, consider approving an amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan, allocating Home American Rescue Plan ARP grant funds and authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents. Bob, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. This item basically documents the approval process we had last month for the ARP funds. Includes renovating a facility to host up to eight units for homeless veterans and case management, and then another program to help with homeless prevention.
And what are the total dollars?
It's over a million dollars. It is, the funds, those are the RAP funds that came in almost a year ago. 2021 will be, almost, actually, almost $650,000 goes to the renovation and the case management, and then another $400,000 comes to us, the city, to manage that homeless prevention program.
Any questions for Bob on this item? Thank you, Tommy. Seconded by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will now move into our regular agenda. One item, one item only. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and opponents are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. A is consider awarding a task order under IDIQ Contract ES-06-19 Engineering Services to Fries and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of $1,092,570 for the initial service line inventory development as part of Phase Two of the Lead and Copper Rural Revision Compliance Program and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And Andy, you're on.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Andy Vasselli, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. So EPA has come down with a lead and copper rule revision. It was enacted in 2021, and as part of that, it's putting more stringent regulations on lead and copper rules, generally, in water systems, is from service lines. It's a lot of older material used in service lines. So when it started up, we did a Phase One and initial assessment. Back in the summer of 2021, we engaged Fries and Nichols to assist us with that. This is a multi-year, multimillion-dollar project to, basically, to be in compliance with this upcoming regulation. So we wanted to get ahead of the game, so by starting off with Fries and Nichols. And what they did as part of Phase One is look at our old records, if you will, and help develop a plan into the future. So they've developed a five-phase project for us, starting here with Phase Two, to help us and guide us through the project. And so with us today is Julie Huerta with Fries and Nichols, and so she's going to walk through Phase Two, as well as the long-term project that we have before us.
So just to be clear, this million dollars is for analysis and inventory taking. It does nothing to remove lead or copper?
That is correct. Yes, so
So it's a million-dollar contract just to evaluate.
As part of Phase Two. That is correct. Now, there will be some field investigations as part of it, as Julie will be explaining, but with the rule in 2024, you have to have not all the lead service lines replaced, but you have to have enough documentation and a plan in place to implement that.
Thank you, Andy. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Julie Huerta with Fries and Nichols. This is a timeline just showing about lead use in the United States, and I won't step through the whole thing. I think the most important date I want to point out here is that 1988 was when lead was banned as a plumbing material for the U.S. And so, and then in 2021, they announced these new revisions to lead and copper regulation for public water systems, and we have this important compliance date of 2024 that we're trying to prepare the city for. And one more thing is that there are required ongoing activities after 2024 because there are new actions required with this new rule. So lead and copper are regulated together because these two contaminants have something in common. They're, they're, they come from the plumbing materials in the water system. They're not really in the aquifers, they're not in the lakes. The source is from plumbing materials. The health effects of lead are listed here. A lot of them have to do with early childhood development, and copper also has health effects. I'm sharing this with you because while these are together and they're the same rule, the EPA reviewed the rule for these revisions and has not touched the copper side. And so everything I'm going to be talking about is changes to the regulation of lead. So for a public water system, lead regulation all comes down to how corrosive is your water, and if you have lead and copper in your plumbing materials. And this is all the way from the water plant into inside of homes. They want to know the public exposure. This honeycomb graphic that I've got here, this describes the major changes in these rural revisions. We are going to talk a lot about the service line material inventory because that's the biggest, newest requirement, and this is the requirement to inventory the lines that run from the mains into each building connection for your water system. Prior to these rural revisions, it was not required to document what those materials were and to keep a comprehensive list of those, but now it is required. And this is a big undertaking for utilities like this that have over 35,000 connections. As Andy mentioned, we came up with a five-phased approach to come into compliance with these regulations. We did already complete the level one, or the Phase One, which was this initial assessment. And then I'm going to talk about what we're proposing as part of Phase Two, which is really to get this initial inventory together. There is a timeline. We can come back to this if you have questions, but really, the important thing I want to highlight is that getting this initial inventory started early, it will impact what it's going to look like, the rest of the regulations, sorry, what the rest of the regulatory compliance will look like. They do depend on what you find in your material inventory.
So we're going to find what the inventory is, what is the deadline for removal?
So there is not necessarily going to be a removal process. The requirement of the rule is that you know if you have lead, where that lead is, and then if your sample results show that lead is over the action level, the regulatory health limit, then the system initiates replacement activity. And what that looks like is you have to achieve a certain percentage of replacement until your results show that you're back below that, that health level.
I assume that with TCEQ, we are constantly testing our water and sending samples to TCEQ. So I would assume, again, that if we look at the latest reports that we have of water sampling sent to TCEQ, we would already know where the lead percentage is.
Yes, Mayor, we do. The city's currently on a Yes, Mayor, we do. The city's currently on a reduced schedule, so we sample every three years for monitoring for lead in customers' homes. The, there is lead detection. There has been lead found in the city, but not hitting the, they assess it as system level. So, if the 90th percentile is over the action level, then the system's required to do corrosion-controlled treatment or lead service line replacement. Those are, and so-
We have available what our actual lead content was in the last TCEQ sampling of San Angelo water?
We do. I don't have those numbers with me today in this, part of this presentation, but we do. There, in every sampling event, there's, there are lead detections.
Well, of course. The question mark is at what level, and what level kicks in as a crisis level, or you need to address it level?
So, the action level is 15 parts per billion. The 90th percentile for San Angelo has always remained below that action level.
Even though our test results have indicated we don't have a lead issue, we still have to spend the money to do an inventory of our lead pipes or lead?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Even though we have shown statistically we don't have a problem?
Correct.
So, we need to spend a million dollars to prove that up?
Yes. The EPA is requiring that every public water system, regardless of, even if you were built entirely after the lead ban, has to provide this inventory of service line material.
Don't we love mandates?
Unfunded mandates.
Right. I'm going to talk a bit about what we did in the Phase One and then, and then what we're proposing in the next phase. During the initial assessment, we looked at existing data, and we, for example, the water quality data to see that there is some lead occurrence. So, we learned that lead sources do exist out there, and that, we also learned that corrosivity may be a factor. There were some slightly corrosive water parameters found, and so, one of the things we are going to recommend as part of the next phase is a further study to make sure that we understand the corrosivity of the water for the city. The rule requires that we review a certain set of about dozen different document types, and this, this table here shows, we went through to see which of those were available, how complete they were, and the city looks pretty good, actually, compared to others I've seen. They've got 75% of those records available, which is good news because in this next phase, we will use that documentation to build your inventory and reduce the amount of field verification that you would be doing over time. Also, a part of this effort, then, we came together with budget-level estimates to come into compliance with the rest of this rule. You know, the, the big takeaway from this was that it will be a multimillion project spread out over several years, and-
Why would that be if we currently, through TCEQ, do not have a lead problem in our water, and again, that's documented by TCEQ, and what we send to them? So, why is there anticipated all of these additional expenses?
It is mostly driven by the lead service line requirement. There are other deliverables that they're requiring. Now, you have to have a full-blown plan to replace lead service lines, even if you've never historically had a problem with lead. So, that, that's one of the items. The inventory is going to take a lot of effort, and, you know, once you've established everything that you can through records, you're going to have several thousand that we've seen connections that need to be verified. In customers, we are required, the city will be required to send letters to customers saying, the customers that we don't know their service line material, we're not sure of your service line material, and there's required language that says it may be lead, here are the health effects of lead. So, really, the interest is to, to, over time, over the next few years, you know, identify as many service line materials as we can. I don't think that it's feasible to complete that by 2024, and so there will be continued action after that.
Well, unquestionably, we as the city council and we as a city do not want to have a lead issue with our water. We want to make sure our citizens trust that the water we're delivering is not going to create current or future health crises. That being said, it's an unfunded mandate, and we're going to be asked to do it, right?
Part of Phase One, to that point, is that we did look for funding opportunities. There's, in the state revolving fund, about 54 million coming down, and then 220 million from the federal government, also through the state, that will be dedicated towards lead service line replacements, and it can be used towards building your inventory. So, one of the things that we have included in this next phase is support to help the city solicit for funding.
There are grant opportunities, is what you're saying?
There's grants and there's loans.
Grants?
Yeah, there, there are two different funding mechanisms for the rule. I'm going to move into what we're proposing for the next phase. The biggest item is the inventory, doing an initial inventory using the records that we have. Then, the next set of, of lighter blue bulleted items have to do with, we are recommending to pilot some initial field work. So, once we put your inventory together, we'll be able to see what areas of the city do we have, not have information on, and that were built prior to the lead ban, and we are recommending to go to 400 sites, just as an initial effort, to be able to say, we've checked in all these subdivisions, and this is what we found. And this will also help eventually to, to the next darker blue point, put together bid documents for the city to use to be able to bid this, this work out over time.
So, are you using a specific date that says if the home, if that subdivision was built after, I'll make this up, 1989, then it would, probably wouldn't be a problem, but anything built before a certain date would be your focus?
Correct. That's exactly it. So, the, the date, you got really close, it's 1988. So, we would need to verify, I think, anything that was in the ground before 1988 that we do not have records on. So, I just, you know, as a part of the field work that we're proposing at these 400 homes, there will be some customer interaction, you know, talking to them about what this requirement is, that we need to look on their side of the meter to verify what the line is on the private side. I'm not sure if I said that before, but the rule requires both the public and the private sidelines be identified what the material is and if it contains lead. So-
Yes, Tom?
So, if we're testing the line, do we test at the hydrant? Do we test, so you're saying the public and the private side of the line? There's some people out there that don't have some very good plumbing.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, do we test right after the meter, prior to it gets into the house? Because there's some of that where the, the tests out of those house, it isn't the responsibility of the city of what they have. That is their issue. So, how do we differentiate that?
So, this has always been a difficult point with the Lead and Copper Rule. The cus, so, when we're talking about monitoring, by the way, I'm talking about actually looking at what the material of the line is. I think what you're talking about is water, the actual monitor, taking a water sample and analyzing it for lead. That currently, what we do currently is all taken inside of customer homes. It's required by the EPA, and, and so, it does capture interior plumbing, which you're right-
So, we're going to go into people's homes and test their plumbing?
We currently already do. All of the current lead and copper sites that the city uses, we drop, the way it works is we drop sample bottles off, and the customers collect them from a tap that's used for consumption, so we recommend the kitchen tap, and then we have those samples analyzed. And so, to your point, yes, it does catch interior plumbing. The, the focus of the rule, the intent was, they want to know what the public exposure is, and if the water system can mitigate that by corrosion control, that's one option. And then, lead service line replacement, that does not include inside the homes, you're correct. So, but, that, that is a difficult point in the rule.
Thank you.
And then, the, the last two items that we're proposing, I've mentioned already, the one is funding application support because of these funds that are coming available, and then doing a desktop corrosivity study because we did find that one parameter in the water is slightly corrosive, and we, we saw that it was tracking with the higher lead detections historically, and we would like to understand, so the city really has a firm understanding of if there's corrosion problems.
Say that again. I'm confused.
So, we'd like to do a, get a better understanding of the water corrosivity for the city. There are several different parameters that you can look at, and one of them was showing slightly corrosive, and we would like to better understand-
But if our, if our TCEQ water samples do not show that, what are you referring to?
The Lead and Copper Rule does require corrosivity testing, but it's only required for the city when it brings on a new treatment process or a new source, and it may, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not very familiar with the utility. It may have been a few years since you've done a corrosion analysis. And what we are proposing is to do a corrosion analysis now on more current water quality data that would, you know, make sure that the city's well-prepared, especially with these new regulations in place for if there's any possible corrosion. Andy, did you want to say?
Andy?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to clarify that. So, my understanding is the last corrosivity study was a number of years ago, I'm going to say a decade or more. And so, actually, staff, Alice and I worked on this before she left. We had discussed, and we actually requested the desktop corrosivity study be included in this because if you change, we'll say, what's leaving the water plant, that can actually have a beneficial impact on the potential impacts of the Lead and Copper Rule. So, rather than replacing more service lines, we potentially could change things at the water plant, you know, and there's ways, ways and methods of treatment to do that, to actually help us in the long run. So, we haven't had a study in a long, a long time, and this could hopefully, hopefully be a potential solution to help us down the road, and so that's why we requested it.
Well, so, we obviously have talked about upgrading our water treatment facilities. So, knowing that we're going to upgrade our water treatment facilities, how does that tie in to the plan to upgrade our water, our water treatment facilities?
That's a great question, Mayor. Obviously, we, we do have plans to improve that as part of the Contra River Water Project, but we don't have a defined timeline at this point, and so this is a federal mandate by 2024. And so, we have to have a plan in place because depending on when that water plant is upgraded, and it's going to be a multi-year construction project, we need to be up in front of this rule and regulation before it hits us.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Andy. Well, actually, Andy, I might ask you to come back up. This next slide is yours, unless there, are there any other questions?
Are there other questions or comments from city council? Anybody? No, go ahead.
So, that concludes. Yeah, I understand, Mayor, from your comments, that sometimes it can be a little bit of a bitter pill to swallow. We haven't had problems with the previous Lead and Copper Rule to date, but they're putting more stringent regulations, and the documentation, the level of effort that we're needing to go into is a federal mandate. You know, we have the capital funds to do so, but those capital funds can be used for different, other allocations that we do need also. But, the intention of the rule and the change is for human health, and as Julie mentioned, primarily early health development in children. And so, but, in addition to the federal mandate, it's a requirement for us to do to help our citizens, so.
No, we know there are many cities who have had problems with their water, so we don't want to be one of those cities that makes the national news because we haven't addressed water quality. So, I don't think anyone on this council wants to fight the issue. We want healthy, we want our citizens to have water that won't impact their health negatively. So, there's no question about it, but I think anytime we have a million-dollar contract that will lead to many more millions of dollars expected to address a unfunded mandate, we need to ask questions and make sure the citizens understand, we want them to have the best quality water possible. We do want that, but we need to understand the process and ask questions about, and not create an environment where people would be nervous that today, today, that they don't have good quality water. So, it's not about not having good quality water right now, it's about making sure down the road that there's no issues, because we don't have a water quality issue right now, right?
We mean the regulations.
Yeah. Just want to make sure.
Yes. Yeah, no, you're exactly right. Yes. So, there is not a lead and copper issue under the current regulation, but we need to be prepared for the future regulations. So, thank you for clarifying that. And then, I did want to touch a little bit on the additional fee as part of this study is to look into grants and loans. I will let Mayor and Council know that we, Water Utility Staff, have been contacted by numerous entities, consultants, to get ahead of the Lead and Copper Rule. We initially selected Fries and Nichols early on for a small inventory study, and, and they've been really good to work with as part of Phase One. Other many times where a, a different entity contacted me, I sent the information out to them, they were already on top of it. And so, this is a heavy-hitting item nationwide, and those consultants are, are basically seeing this as an opportunity to help out, and so we are doing our best as staff to stay ahead of it, so.
Thank you. So, do we need to take action on this item? So, with that, yes, go ahead, Harry?
I have a question. I think there's a concern here of this non-funded aspect of it. Are, who is going to be doing the grant requests, and is that going to be coming back to council with your success or failure in getting these funds?
So, Fries and Nichols will help us with the application to Texas Water Development Board, and so, as, as we were talking before, there's going to be a five-phase approach. So, the next task order for Phase Three will be coming before council, and so at that point, you'll be notified, and if at any point you're looking for updates, we can certainly provide them.
Yes, go ahead, someone, which, Tom, okay.
So, Andy, I don't know if you can go back to Julie's original slides where it showed the phases. So, we're just, this million and 92 is just for Phase Two, right?
That is correct.
So, we still got funding for Phase Three, Four, and Five?
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're going to complete Phase Two in the next six months?
Twelve months, approximately.
Twelve months, okay. All right, that, that was my first one. And I didn't, I thought this was going to be a five-phase, this million was for five phases, and I was curious how we were going to do the payout, if we had to pay it all up in front, or is there certain benchmarks they hit? But, as it's a six, 12 months, I see we hit that. Now, one thing I did want to ask is, we're going to have to get 400 samples, Julie, I think, if I were-
Up to 400 samples, that is correct.
Well, I, I hate to go out on a limb here, but I say council and city staffs and employees should volunteer those 400 samples.
You can come to my house if you want.
Well, I'm serious. I was fixing to say-
I mean, the question mark is, it's going to be in the older neighborhoods, okay? So, the question mark is, where are our older neighborhoods would be, would be suspect to this? The new subdivisions and, we're probably not going to have the issue. So, it's the older neighborhoods, and there's several of us on council who live in older neighborhoods, so.
It was referenced earlier, 1988 was the deadline, or the cutoff, if you will, for City San Angelo with the lead ban, and so, it's, it's construction prior to 1988.
Well, there'll be, no, I mean, the Santa Rita neighborhood is-
There's going to be a huge portion of all of our districts.
Yeah.
I'll get you 400 samples in one district, anyway, that'll say.
Well, and there, and there is a public engagement component to this project as well, obviously, and it had to be as part when we got samples from the existing customers that we collect samples from as well. So, it's part of the rule, it's part of the regulation, and so, we've engaged Brian and Laura Lai, they'll be helping us as well. It's not the first time they've heard of it.
My request on that is if you could engage city staff and employees to do this, you've at least already got a, a positive channel on knowing who these people are, and it looks like you have a plan for that, so I'm good.
So, are we asking, to his point, are we asking for volunteers, or are we sending a letter to a house, they're going to open up their mail and go, oh, my gosh, they're going to come into my home and test my water?
I, I think for right now, we probably need to start Phase Two and get a good idea of where we need to have these samples taken.
So, you may have to, you may have to take the samples from specific areas as mandated, perhaps?
Correct, correct. So, yeah. You know, obviously, when we get to that point, if there's anybody that would like to volunteer, certainly let me know, but I think at this point, we need to let Fries and Nichols initiate it and find the locations.
Because I think the backflow issue that we had from last year- Because I think the backflow issue that we had from last year, no, no comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
So one of the things that will happen in this phase is developing the public outreach materials. So yes, the goal is going to be to use your inventory to select where you need the most information. And it's a great, great idea to use city staff if they are in those areas. But otherwise, we will help develop, there are different utilities that do it different ways, but materials so the city can maybe hang door hangers and people can opt in to be part of this study, or be part of the effort, so.
Remember, many people don't open their front door, because they come in through their garage. So we know that as we have tried to redo some streets, for example, we put notices on front doors, but people enter their homes from the garage, or so they never saw the little thing.
You know, that brings in the integrity of the sample. I know some guys, you don't want to deliver a sample request on a Friday at 5:00, all right? It just ain't going to be good.
Well, one point of clarification, so Mayor, you mentioned about going into people's homes. So the sample bottles will be delivered, and they will do the sampling in the house. For the lead levels, for the lead line sampling, we won't actually be going in their house. It'll be done in the yard, if you will, both on the city side and on the customer side of the meter. So it won't be necessarily going, it won't be going directly in their house. And that's a point of clarification that probably needs to be said.
We don't mean to get lost in the weeds here, but I was just curious.
No, I think we need, yeah, well, I think we need to clarify, because you, I mean, this is on public television, so I think it will raise a lot of concerns and questions from citizens. And many citizens will say, don't come into my house. So, and then there'll be people like Tom who say, you're welcome to my home. So there you go. Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, it will be in the yard, and we'll be coordinating with the communications effort and get volunteers, but we'll have to be strategic about how we do that as well, so.
But I just want to repeat, we are, we as a council, I'm sure, want to make sure that we have the healthiest community relative to the quality of water that we sell, serve, deliver.
We're going to spend the money even though we really may not want, it reminds me of the old, you know, everybody wants to go to heaven, nobody wants to die. You know, we want to make sure we got this right, and we're going to have to spend the money to make sure we got it right, so.
Thank you, Andy.
And I'll reinforce on that, Tommy, I agree.
You want to go to heaven?
Absolutely, Mayor. But more along the lines of my thought process was along the idea of the funding. You know, we have that million dollars that we could be spending on infrastructure improvements, but this is a federal mandate that we have to do. So it, like I said earlier, it's a bitter pill to swallow, but regulations do that. And there is good intention behind regulations. There've been a lot of lead instances in the news recently as well.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I move approval.
Thank you, Tommy. Seconded by Karen. Any public comment on this item?
Anna Bartosz, single member District One. Just wondering, people that have water treatment in their homes, such as reverse osmosis, will there be any, how do you handle that?
Andy might be able to answer that, or not?
So the rule requires that sampling be done where there's not treatment. They want to see what the untreated water looks like at the taps, and so those homes would not be eligible to be on the monitoring list, or they would have to-
Wait a minute, Andy just said they would be doing it outside the home, not inside the home, so how does that work? Because you're saying, no, that's not true. So I want to know what is the truth. So inside the home or outside the home?
Go ahead.
So the sampling of the water quality will be inside the home. The sampling I was referencing to was the lead, or the service line sampling. So that's where they would actually excavate and see what the service line is. So if you will, there's two different sampling going on. One is the physical materials of the service line, and one is of the water quality.
Just to make sure, because that was not clear before. I don't think we realized there were two different samplings going on, one inside and one outside, because I think we just said it's all going to happen outside. So now this-
And for Phase Two, our sampling we're talking about is the service line inventory. So I apologize for any miscommunications on that. When you are in this every day, the terminology kind of intermingles and-
Okay, just so for clarification, so not that, first of all, all of us are clear in terms of what's happening, but then certainly the public needs to better understand.
So to clarify Julie's point there, any in-house sampling of the water quality will have to be before a treatment process in the home. So if they have some sort of filtration, or some sort of home treatment, that home would either be excluded, or it'd have to be done before that treatment system.
I have a question.
Yes, Larry.
Why not take the water from an outside hose bib? Because that's after the meter.
It is, but that's, as Julie mentioned earlier, that's not directly the water people are drinking.
But we still had to have backflow.
Larry goes outside to get a drink all the time.
If you don't have a reverse osmosis system, then you're getting the same water that's coming out of that bib, correct?
Well, there is potential contamination on hose bubs as well. When you take an outdoor sample, a lot of these sampling processes need to be done in a very clean environment, or the best environment you can have.
You know, one of the things that we've been talking about are households, but what about the commercial businesses? What are we doing in the business community? Because all we've talked about are households, but there are many businesses that obviously have employees who drink the water that comes into that building.
So schools and daycares are a heightened emphasis of the lead and copper rule revision. So I don't recall the, all the specific details of it, but there is increased testing and communications with daycares and schools as part of this, because as we mentioned earlier, lead leads to potential early childhood development issues.
Well, what about retirement homes? What, I mean, again, I think we all were thinking household. And now I think we've got to understand it's broader than household, it's going to be businesses, community, schools, daycares.
Churches.
Churches, I mean-
It's everybody.
Yes, Mayor, so the service line material inventory will be done at every single service connection. And customers, and I want to reiterate this point, all customers, unless we've shown that they are non-lead service lines, they're going to get letters. And so if a business, or a school, or church has material that may be lead, they're going to get these letters annually from the city that say, that make them aware of that, that, and it'll either say, you know, either if we ever find lead, it would of course say that, but it would say it's unknown, it could be lead, we're doing, and, you know, we're proposing that, then you'd be able to say a plan, that we're planning to go through and identify these in such and such way.
Okay, so yes, Lucy?
So if we were to approve this one, would it start? Like, when would you start going and collecting the samples and all that?
Can you repeat the question?
At what point would you go and start taking the samples from the homes?
Water quality samples? So the monitoring and the current rule will continue the way that it is, which is every three years, starting in 2025, really the beginning of the next calendar year after this rule is compliance date. That's when the new sampling, if there are new sampling sites, then that we will go into the new sampling sites.
But she's wanting to know today, like if, are you, is it 30 days that you're going to be doing this? It's not about after 2025, it's about 2022 and 2023. When are you coming into the households? Shane, you're on.
Okay. In this phase and what we're doing right now, we will not be going into households.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with us going in and taking water samples. We've been taking water samples for decades now.
Yeah.
And so, and those are already established spots, those are established locations, and those people know, already know we're going to send them water, we're going to give them water bottles to go get a sample for us. And so we are not physically going to go in and take a sample from anybody's house. This is strictly, we will be digging up the meter, the water meter, basically is what we're going to be doing. We're going to be looking at the pipes on our side of the water meter, and the pipes on the residential side of the meter, so we can inventory what pipes, what kind of pipes they are, whether they're copper service lines, whether they're galvanized service lines with lead packing in them, things like that. That's what we're looking for. We will not, everybody, quit worrying, we're going into the houses, we're not going into the houses during this phase.
Good, because now we're clarifying it again.
That's it. So this is just strictly at the water meter for Phase Two, and this is what we will be going through in Phase Two. And so now, again, we do, we do the water sampling, but those are already established, we already have that in place, we're, and we're not going to be going into anybody's homes, we're not going to be doing anything. Everybody will be getting a letter, you know, stating, hey, this is a possibility that your lines could have this. If a homeowner wants to take it upon themselves at any given point to go in and have their own lines checked by a licensed plumber, or whatever they want to do, or if they want to replace their plumbing, that will be up to the individual homeowner at that point. But again, that's a notification method that, again, that is a requirement of this, is that we notify everybody that you could have lead within your pipe system.
Thank you. Karen, I think you wanted to make a comment or ask a question?
I do, and it's belated, so I apologize, but we understand that it's a federal mandate, and it's going to happen. My question regards whether or not multiple bids were solicited, no offense to you, but curious whether or not the city solicited multiple bids before dedicating this money to a project.
As part of the procurement process for engineering services, we can't ask for bids, we just ask, we can only ask for qualifications. And then we base, we base our, we base our decision on who we utilize based on their qualifications. And then once we select who's, who we choose to be most qualified, then we negotiate the price from there.
Thank you for explaining, that's a common question from the public.
Is there still room for negotiation on price?
Well, I'm sure there is, but at this point in time, there's, we start changing the parameters of our, of our testing and what we're doing, so.
Thank you for that question, Karen.
If you don't mind, during the Phase Two task order discussions, there were changes to the scope and fee over the process. So city staff was certainly engaged with Freezing Nichols to establish the scope that we need, and then the fee matched that scope that's necessary to comply.
So we're assuming you guys are tough negotiators.
Oh, absolutely, Mayor.
I have one other question.
Yes, Larry, please.
I believe the lady said that something about the test being done annually, which seems to presuppose that there's going to be several testings on the same residents, is that correct?
The testing, meaning the actual drawing of water and analyzing it, that is done actually every three years, triannually now? When the, and, I'm sorry, what was the question? The same homes?
I was concerned about the residences. Are there going to be tests more than once?
Yes, so the way it works is you have to have a pool of sample locations and sample at those same locations over time. So those customers that'll be a part of the sampling program would be revisited every time that we have a sample event.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, I'm so in the weeds, I forget, do we have a motion on the floor in a second? Okay.
We do.
All right, good. With that, then I'm assuming we can take a vote. So all in favor of approving this task order for $1,092,570, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. We will now move into our closed session, executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, A, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding COSA DC. We all will come back following the closed session. 4:00 AM, and this meeting will be called back to order following the closed session. First item is to consider items discussed in executive session, which there are no announcements at this point. Item B is consideration of approving various board nominations, the tax increment reinvestment zone, Ryan Newland, the mayor, to the first term ending July 2024. And may I have a motion for approval of Ryan Newland to Tiers?
I move.
Seconded. Any discussion on Ryan Newland as a Tiers board member? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Discussion and confirmation of City Council meeting dates in November, December, and January. So the November dates are scheduled for November 1 and November 15. Two, December is typically scheduled for the second Tuesday and December 13. I'm sure most of you have looked at your calendar to see if that's okay. And then January dates are scheduled for January 3 and January 17, if there's no objections to that. And if that's true, may we have a motion for approval of these dates as presented.
I'll move.
Thank you, Larry. Seconded by Harry.
Could I just make a quick note? And because of the proposed January dates, and we'll probably only be able to get those agendas to you guys on Thursday instead of Tuesday, and just the way that the holidays follow, for the January 3 meeting, staff will be out on the 26th, which is the Monday prior, for Christmas break, and then for the 17th, we'll be out, I'm sorry, for the 17th would be fine. But probably for the January 3 meeting, that's probably going to go to you on Thursday, the 29th, instead of Wednesday.
I'm not sure it'll be a very big agenda for them, so I don't think it'll be in-
And the holidays is typically not.
So there's a motion, and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on approving those dates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item D, announcements and consideration of future agenda items, are there any? Seeing none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn.
We are moved, seconded, and voted affirmatively.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 11:36 AM.